So, members of the board, when you hear your name, please say "present." Chairperson Thompson.
Present.
Michael Arvinides.
Present.
Henry Berger.
Present.
Una Clark. Lorraine Cortez-Vasquez, it's going to be absent and excused. Fernando Ferrer.
Here.
Kevin Kim.
Present.
Myra Lanares-Garcia.
Present.
Robert Mohica. Will be here in a minute. Brian Oberfell.
Present.
Jill O'Donnell Torme.
Present.
Charlie Shorter.
Present.
Ken Sunshine.
Present.
Sandra Wilkin.
Present.
Burton Burke.
Present.
And Giovanni Piccant.
Present.
You have a quorum, Bill.
Okay, there we go. This public meeting of the City University of New York Board of Trustees is now called to order. On March 7, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202 declaring a state of emergency in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 13, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202.1, which included a suspension of law allowing the attendance of meetings telephonically or other similar service. Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law, to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take such actions authorized by the law without in-public, in-person access to meetings and authorize such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or similar service, provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceeding and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed. In accordance with the Executive Order, this board meeting is being held via teleconference with a live stream found at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. A copy of the calendar agenda of items is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting. As a reminder, please mute your phones so we can ensure that everyone can hear. Let me ask the Secretary to take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery.
Okay, so, members of the Chancellery, please respond "present" when you hear your name. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
Derek Davis.
Present.
Jose Luis Cruz.
Present.
Hector Batista.
Present.
And Grace. Matthew Sapienza.
Present.
Pamela Silverblatt.
Present.
Brian Cohen.
Present.
Maite Unco.
Present.
Richard White.
Present.
Dorian Gloria.
Present.
Andrea Shapiro-Davis.
Present.
And Denise Maybank.
Present.
That's it. Bill, you're muted, Bill. You're muted.
Thank you. I'll just leave it open. You're right.
Sorry.
On behalf of the CUNY Board of Trustees, let me say how good it is to see all of my colleagues, be able to see the members of the Chancellery, and it's good to see all of our presidents with us today on Zoom. I know we have some new faces, nine new presidents, and I'd just like to welcome all of you. Without going through, but then I know we have Ken Adams from LaGuardia, Doris Centrone from Guttman, Daisy Coco de Felipe from Hostos, Bernice In-- oh, wait a second, Bernice has been around for a while. What is this? We have-- let me just stop there, rather than go through every name. You know, as a matter of fact, if we have our presidents on the line, and we have a number of those, including those who have been here for a while, could our presidents just individually say hello? I think that's an easier thing, because then we can put a name with a face also for those we haven't had the chance to meet yet in person.
Good evening. I was from your college on behalf of the person who's been around for a while. Thank you for the opportunity. As the interim for a year and to be appointed officially, thank you to the chair and to the chancellor and to all my colleagues. It's good to see you.
Good seeing you. Other presidents that we may have on.
Thank you, Robin Garrel. I'm at the Graduate Center, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here and lead the Graduate Center.
Hi, everyone. I'm Michelle Anderson from Brooklyn College. It's lovely to see everyone's face.
Always good seeing you, President.
Sarah Bartlett, the Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism, and happy holidays to everyone.
Happy holidays to you.
John Mogalescu, CUNY School of Professional Studies.
Hey, John.
Mary Pearl. Go ahead.
Bill Fritz, College of Staten Island, the campus that's overrun by deer.
Good night, everyone. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you.
And bish wishes to everyone. This is Mary Pearl from Macaulay Honors College.
Hi, Daisy Coco de Felipe from Hostos Community College. I'm the interim president, a former provost returning to this position this year. Thank you for your support.
Hi, Jennifer Rab Hunter College.
Hi, Carol Mason, John Jay College, and happy to be able to see you all at faces and not just voices on the phone.
Exactly, and with a different hairdo, so it's always good to see you, President.
Greg May, CUNY School of Labor and Urban Studies. Happy holidays to everybody.
Happy holidays.
Hi, it's Mary Lubilek from the Law School. I just want to thank you for bringing us all these wonderful new people to the university.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dan Lemmons. I'm one of a dying breed. I'm an interim president. Happy to be here with you.
And not to be negative, but we're going to keep changing that. I mean-- Yeah. Interims.
Hi. Hello.
Hello.
Hi, Russ Hutler. Great to see everybody.
Always a pleasure.
Peru College. I met you all in person back in February. Seems like a lifetime ago.
It feels like it also. That was our last public meeting, so it's great seeing you again. Anybody else?
Hi, folks. This is Frank Wu here, delighted to be here, and I have not ever met you in person. I look forward to doing that in 2021.
There are those who would say that you're fortunate, but it is great to see everybody. Anybody else? It is good seeing everybody. We all, and we look forward to working and continuing to work with some of you and working with all of you, definitely.
I think you're right.
Since we last met, the trustees have also been very involved in searches for Lehman, Medgar Evers, and Guttman. And let me thank my colleagues for their time and effort on this critical task. As you know, the CUNY Board of Trustees could not convene its December 7, 2020, public hearing in person. Instead, the Office of the Secretary accepted written and video testimony and statements from concerned individuals on items on the calendar for this December 14, 2020, board meeting via email. Testimonies were accepted until 11:30 PM on Monday, December 7, 2020, and shared with the trustees on December 11 of 2020. A total of 24 written and five video testimonies were submitted and are attached for your review. Students and faculty expressed concerns regarding increased class sizes, which negatively impact the student experience and faculty's ability to provide adequate in-class and office hour support to students. Students and faculty also urged CUNY to extend the credit, no-credit policy for the duration of the pandemic. Students also testified about the lack of access to on-campus resources and support systems because of the pandemic. Professors at LaGuardia Community College urged President Adams to continue to fund the English Language Center program and reinstate adjunct professors who are teaching in this program. 1,065 faculty, students, and staff jointly signed a letter in opposition to the resolution to renew the university's contract with Turnitin, emphasizing that, one, misunderstanding about the nature and intent of this software has represented in a resolution; two, Turnitin's violation of the CUNY University Faculty Senate's resolution affirming the privacy of learning data and principles for working with third-party vendors approved in May of 2020; three, the lack of consultation with relevant and interested faculty, staff, and student groups across CUNY; and four, questionable wisdom of a commitment by the university to the exorbitant cost of this contract during a moment of fiscal crisis. Let me thank all of those who submitted testimony to us. Testimonies are available for review in the Office of the Secretary. I'd like to close my remarks today by thanking everyone for their tireless efforts on behalf of the university and our students, faculty, and staff during 2020. It's been a difficult year, and one will never forget, but you've all met the challenges with dignity and grace. On behalf of the entire board, we wish everyone a happy and healthy 2021. Look, on a personal basis, it has not been easy. We have lost people, which continues to be heartbreaking for all of us. This has been a difficult, tough year. I would like to thank and single out the chancellor and his staff for being flexible, first, for rising to the challenge and for meeting it head-on. It has been a tough year. The one thing I can say about as we end 2020, we're looking forward to a better 2021 as we see individuals who are who are starting to receive the vaccine. Hopefully, it is not going back to normal. Clearly, there will be a new normal, but as that becomes more widespread, I'm looking forward to the days when all of us can get together in a room again and not have to do it virtually. And as I said, for our students and faculty and others, they have adjusted, they have made the transition to this difficult year well, and I'd like to just thank them. And last but not least, to Gail and her staff in the secretary's office. Job well done. And thanks for getting us, as I said, we're able to see each other. And I will say, in looking at so many of you and presidents and members of staff and others and my colleagues, I've missed you all. I miss seeing you all in person. So, looking forward toward 2021 where we can all be together and celebrate the City University system and our individual schools in person. With that, let me go to Chancellor Matos Rodriguez for comments.
Thank you, Chair Thompson, for your words and echo your sentiments also. So, it is great to be back here today to make my final report of 2020 along with all these familiar faces that we have missed so much, particularly in the context of our board meetings. I think that we can all agree that it's been quite a year for the challenges we have faced and for the unprecedented steps that we have taken to keep our community safe, our university running efficiently, and our students on track to reach their educational goals. sincere thanks to all of you for the work that you have done in sustaining CUNY through this very difficult and challenging times. Your input and support have been vital. I would like to start by acknowledging the exciting news today that one of our own made history in the battle against COVID-19. Lehman College alumni Sandra Lindsay, who works as an intensive care nurse in Queens and has been treating patients throughout the pandemic, was the first person to receive the approved COVID-19 vaccine here in New York. The moment was fitting for our city and our state that faced the brunt of the pandemic in the spring. It also underscores CUNY's tangible presence and impact on the city and region. Sandra was vaccinated this morning during a livestream of Governor Cuomo's press conference, and she is one of the many frontline workers from CUNY who have worked tirelessly during this time to keep all of us safe. Today, she continues to give us hope and confidence that we are on our way to putting this difficult chapter behind us. What a hero, a wonderful representative of the university on the world stage. And speaking of hope and support, it is my privilege to report that, once again, our campuses have heeded the call of CUNY Tuesday and come to the aid of our students with nearly 2.4 million raised so far from over 6,000 donors, a testament to the compassion and goodwill of our university community and some supporters who have no affiliation with CUNY but value the work that we do. The funds raised will go towards addressing food and housing insecurity and other basic needs for our students. We are grateful to those who donated. And staying in the area of good news, I couldn't be happier to share that we saw a 36% increase in procurement expenditures for minority and women-owned businesses, enterprises, last fiscal year, making the university's vendor program more inclusive and advancing one of the early initiatives I had as chancellor along with this board to boost CUNY's support for MWBEs. CUNY's rate of engagement for MWBEs was 31.88% in state fiscal year 2020, marking an increase of three percentage points from the previous year and exceeding the 30% target set by Governor Cuomo, which is the highest MWBE goal by any state in the nation. University expenditures on state contracts totaled 22.3 million. With city-funded contracts included, CUNY's wide, system-wide expenditures on MWBEs rose by 8.5 million in fiscal year 2020 to 31.9 million, a 36% increase. Much thanks to the governor and the Board of Trustees for the leadership and support on this important issue. Earlier this month, we also announced that in our ongoing efforts to maintain the health and safety of the CUNY community, priority COVID-19 testing is now available for everyone at CUNY who works or lives on campus or attends or teaches an in-person class. Testing is conducted at designated New York City Health and Hospital testing sites, thanks to a partnership between CUNY and the City of New York. On the same day of that announcement, the CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy launched Convince USA, one branch of a global awareness project to promote inclusive public dialogue to reduce reluctance for taking an approved vaccine. Our response to this health crisis has been informed at every step by the core principles of safety, inclusiveness, and accessibility, and we are fortunate to have partners who share in this vision. Last month, CUNY received a $10 million gift from the Bank of New York Mellon to help launch a new workforce development program, the New York City Future of Work Initiative, that will provide educational and professional development training to more than 40,000 New Yorkers to aid in the city's economic recovery. The grant will also expand the Bank of New York Mellon Transfer Scholarship Program to support 900 high-achieving and low-income associate-degree graduates who have transferred to a CUNY senior college for their bachelor's degree. Speaking of transfers, let me briefly turn to enrollment figures for the fall. Reflecting downward trends across the country, CUNY recorded a 5.5 decline in enrollment that has resulted in a 52 million loss in revenue for the university. The reduction is driven by undergraduate enrollment, thus saw a system-wide decline of 6.6%, while graduate enrollment actually increased by 3.2%. Broken down further, enrollment at CUNY's seven community colleges dropped by 15.4%. Forty percent of that decrease had to do with non-degree students coming from programs like College Now, while the system's 11 senior colleges and graduate and honors and professional schools were nearly flat, posting a 0.5% decrease. CUNY's efforts to boost enrollment include working with the New York City Department of Education to recruit high school graduates who have indicated that they would enroll in college in the fall of 2020, but did not, and recruiting adult students who previously earned college credits but stopped attending school because of life circumstances that might have since changed. CUNY is also developing micro-credential programs at our community colleges. Micro-credentials are certificates that a student achieves by completing a set of courses. CUNY works with companies to build the curriculum for those certificate programs. Two recent efforts in this area include, first, the launch of the New York Jobs CEO Council, a partnership with 27 CEOs to connect underserved New Yorkers with the skills that they need for today's and tomorrow's workplace; and, second, a grant from the Educational Design Lab to work with six CUNY community colleges to create workforce-relevant credentials for low-wage and unemployed workers, starting with launching micro-pathways that will prepare over 4,000 learners for stable employment in growing fields. Thanks to this grant, our community college will continue to create and implement educational credentials that would lead to the family sustaining wages and employment opportunities that working New Yorkers deserve. We also developed several pilots a semester that added flexibility to some community colleges' academic calendars to create additional entry points for enrollment. I want to share a couple of slides with you. This week, we are also launching an advertising campaign promoting CUNY's community colleges. Developed in collaboration with the colleges and featuring students from each college, the campaign was developed fully in-house, and it's CUNY Central's first community college-specific advertisement campaign. You can see on the screen some of the photos from our amazing students and the campaign. Based on feedback from current students, admissions, and college presidents, we center on two main messages that stood out: the job opportunities and the affordability of our community colleges. The headlines in the ads were driven by current student testimonials. Ad clicks are directed to a new vibrant landing page at cuny.edu/two-year. The page highlights CUNY's affordability and good-paying jobs that require an associate degree offered by our colleges. The campaign will start this week, still in time to influence its spring enrollment numbers, and run throughout the spring. On the academic front, I can report news involving the extension of the Spring 2020 Special COVID-19 Flexible Grading Policy for the current semester. After consulting with several board members, college presidents, deans and provosts, student and faculty campus leaders, we have decided to extend the Spring 2020 Credit-No-Credit Policy to the Fall 2020 term in the face of escalating challenges for our students. We are requiring that college presidents and deans first engage with their campuses to consider how this policy would best fit within their localized framework. To ensure flexibility, the campus will have three variations of the policy from which to implement. Moreover, students will be encouraged to consult with their academic and financial advisors before they make their own decision on this policy for the semester. I have tried to keep the university community informed and engaged through virtual town halls and forums, in-person visits to the campuses, and published op-ed columns and essays touting CUNY's many successes. I had the chance to meet virtually with students, faculty, and staff at virtual town halls at the City College of New York on November 19 and Kingsborough Community College on December 8, where we addressed the university's response to the pandemic and spoke with campus representatives. The conversations were candid and informative and addressed questions about the university's operations going forward. I was privileged to give remarks at the New York State MWBE Forum on December 3 to celebrate its 10th year of creating opportunities for businesses owned by women and minorities in our state. I elaborated on CUNY's success in working with MWBEs, the contest of which I mentioned at the top of my report. While there's no doubt that we face daunting challenges in the months ahead, one thing I am confident about is that of all CUNY would play in the city's recovery as an engine of economic strength. I wrote about the impact of CUNY's cutting-edge graduate programs and professional schools and the contributions that they are making in the battle against COVID-19 in a November 30 column for AM New York. Also in November, I had the pleasure to team up with my counterpart at SUNY, the new chancellor Jim Malatras, for an op-ed in Newsday on the benefits of Governor Cuomo's recent policy change that allows all students enroll at least half-time in career and technical education programs, better known as CTEs, through CUNY or SUNY eligible to receive SNAP benefits without having to fulfill a separate 20-hour-a-week work requirement. That was the second time that I had the good fortune to collaborate with Chancellor Malatras after we participated in a virtual fireside chat in late October on the topic of how CUNY and SUNY are managing their responses to the current health crisis and more precisely, how we were closing equity gaps to support a statewide economic recovery through workforce development. Earlier this month, I was asked to join a lineup of experts and industry leaders at the intersection of business, policy, education, and culture for a New York Times Deal Book initiative in which we all advanced one idea that we thought would put the country on a path towards success. In my essay, I proposed providing a paid internship for every college graduate who wants one as a way to move them into rewarding career tracks. I cited CUNY's numerous partnerships with employers, nonprofit and government agencies, and data that indicates that students who have paid internships get jobs after graduation quicker than those with unpaid internships and at higher salaries. I was happy to make a number of in-person visits to campuses in October and November before the cases spiked. I visited Bronx Community College, John Jay, the College of Staten Island, BMCC, and Queensborough Community College for a chance to greet and thank essential staff, students, and faculty who are running our food pantries, early childhood centers, and other crucial services. There's just no replacing face-to-face interaction and the energy that comes from meeting in person and expressing gratitude, particularly to our very dedicated public safety officers and our personnel from buildings and grounds. With the holidays approaching, we thankfully will have a chance to carefully spend time with our loved ones. I would like to close by wishing everyone a happy and safe holiday. I hope you can all find peace and an appreciation for the lessons we have learned on our journey this year and the opportunities that await us in 2021. I really believe we are standing on the threshold of a positive and resurgent New Year. I know I speak for everyone when I say that I look forward to putting the struggles of 2020 behind us and anticipate a fruitful and productive 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that all board members are participating remotely, and we can't see everyone on the screen at the same time, I'll read the resolutions and ask for members to respond only if you'd like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you're voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record, and let's try to avoid speaking over one another. For clarity--
I just want to-- I'm sorry, Robert did join, so just so you know, for voting, Robert's on, so, okay.
Thank you. For clarity and coordination, I'll read all of the items rather than turning to committee chairs. For clarity and coordination, I'll read all the items rather than turning to committee chairs. So off we go. Item number one, approval of minutes of the regular board meeting of October twenty sixth, 2020 be approved. May I have a second?
Over thousand seconds.
Any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item number two, Committee on Audit. Item number two A, the City University of New York, Approval of a Graham Leach Billy Act Financial Information Security Program Policy. The Federal Trade Commission's safeguard rules, which implements the security provisions of the Graham Leach Billy Act GLBA went into effect on May twenty third, twenty, two thousand and three. The GLBA requires financial institutions, colleges and universities to protect the security, confidentiality and integrity of customer financial records of non-public personally identifiable information. In response to the new policy, in two thousand and four, university issued written guidance to the college campuses on GLBA. To emphasize the importance of GLB, GLBA compliance, the university has updated the guidance into a policy that will require any college, office or department that collects, stores or processes non-public personally identifiable data to implement data protection standards. The university is seeking approval from the Board of Trustees to adopt the CUNY GLBA Financial Information Security Program Policy and that the policy is made effective immediately upon approval. May I have a second for this item?
Shorter.
Second. Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item number three, Committee on Fiscal Affairs. Item number three A, Central Office. The approval of a contract with MathWorks for mathematical computing software. The university currently has an enterprise license with MathWorks for the mathematical computing software projects or products, MATLAB and Simulink, which are used throughout the university for a wide variety of academic disciplines, including engineering, computational biology, business, medicine, social sciences, data service, robotics, machine learning and signal processing. The software provides CUNY's faculty, students and researchers with the experience of using a variety of products that are compatible with online training courses. The existing contract with MathWorks expired on November thirtieth, 2020. The university is seeking approval for a new license with MathWorks Enterprise for MATLAB and Simulink for three years with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms for a total cost of one million, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. May I have a second for this item?
Rare seconds.
Is there discussion on this item? Any questions? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item number three B, Central Office Approval of a Contract with with Turnitin for plagiarism detection software. In order to ensure academic integrity, universities, colleges require plagiarism detective detective detection software to confirm that students are submitting original work for their class assignments. Two thousand and fifteen, the university began to utilize Turnitin, a cloud technology solution based on its ability to meet the needs of large, complex higher education institutions for its unique features and its capability to integrate with Blackboard and other learning management systems. To date, the Turnitin system software has continued to operate successfully. One of the software proprietary features includes the ability to search the internet to find potential acts of plagiarism and compare submitted papers to a database of more than one point two billion previous papers and one hundred and seventy million articles. In addition, the license includes Turnitin's peer review tool, PeerMark, and proprietary online grading tools that can be used by faculty. The university's current contract with Turnitin expired on November eleventh, 2020. The university is seeking approval to extend the contract for three years with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms for total cost of one million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand and fifty dollars. May I have a second for this item?
For rare seconds.
Any discussion or questions on this item?
Bert, discussion? On behalf of my over one thousand colleagues and students and members of staff, I want to thank Chair Thompson for so clearly summarizing the letter that went out point by point. I've been asked to make the case. I need not make it since the chair made it so well. Thank you, Chair Thompson.
Thank you, Trustee Burke.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Can we get comments from the provost in response to the letter that you so eloquently articulated?
Trustee Piquant also has a question after.
Sure, absolutely. Um, Provost?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair and to our colleagues, good evening. I will say that Turnitin was first adopted by the university in two thousand and fifteen per the recommendation of the Blackboard administrators across the system. It was also presented to the Committee on Academic Technology at the time as a tool that would help meet faculty and student needs, not only on the academic integrity issues that have been discussed, but also in terms of other features that the solution provides for marking students' work and allowing them to get feedback on grammar, style and other elements of writing. The contract, as has been stated, ended in November. As you all know, during COVID nineteen, the university has made a point of trying to limit disruption to existing platforms that have been in long use and that have a large volume of use by our faculty and students, even as it has pivoted to looking at new platforms and alternatives that could serve us well moving forward. An example of that is the rigorous consultation effort that we have undertaken regarding proctoring solutions for the mostly online environment that we are in. Having been using this solution for several years now, the fact that the contract was ending, that through the negotiations led by the fiscal affairs folks, pricing was obtained that was favorable to the university and an opportunity to do a tool for three years and before committing to use it before that or beyond that, led to a decision that we would be better serving our faculty and students by retaining that platform. Now, having said that, we have been working in recent months to establish processes and structures that will allow for the evaluation of existing contracts with more lead time, so a broader consultation effort can be undertaken. In this time, because of the limited amount of time available, we did consult with campus CIOs and provosts and asked them to consult with their campus communities and the, you know, feedback that was received was that we should continue use of the platform. I hope that helps provide some context.
Trustee Piquant?
Yes, thank you, Chair Thompson. I have one question. In the last whereas clause in this resolution, there was, and as E V C Cruz just put, mentioned too, there was consultation with local campuses. I would like to know where students are part of those consultation conversations as well, being that this is a server and proctoring system and system that we use to upload assignments, where students consulted in that process as well?
The consultation was made in the limited timeframe we had through CIOs and provosts at the campuses. I would expect that in some cases, but not perhaps all, there was some consultation with students, but I do not have the specifics of how the campuses led those consultation processes.
Thank you.
I would suggest that going forward that at the very least and understand that we may be working with limited time, you know, options, but at the same point, we should make sure that in the future that's a part of the consultation process, even on a, even on an expedited basis.
Agreed.
Other questions? Comments? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose.
Trustee Piquant abstain?
Anyone else? All right, that item is approved. Item number four, Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. Item four A, Creation of Department of Ethnic and Race Studies at the Borough of Manhattan Community College. The Borough of Manhattan Community College proposes the establishment of Department of Ethic, of Ethnic and Race Studies, which will house the Ethnic Studies Program with all the rights and responsibilities of a department. This decision was influenced by the national climate that underscores the strong need to educate CUNY students and the college community about cultural diversity and its riches across the disciplines. And so, the new department's mission will be to create knowledge that reflects the histories, present experiences and future visions of communities that have been marginalized because of race, ethnicity, gender, sexuality and other forms of oppression. The proposed Department of Ethnic and Race Studies at BMCC will serve the university's mission to prepare diverse population of students for work in various disciplines and will align with one of the university's priority, priority initiatives, the system-wide expansion of Black Race and Ethnic Studies, for which CUNY has recently received a three million dollar grant from the Andrew W. Mellon Foundation. May I have a second for this item?
O'Donnell Torme, second.
Discussion on this item or comments? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item four B, the New York City College of Technology establishes a program in healthcare policy and management leading to the Bachelor of Science degree. New York City College of Technology proposes a Bachelor of Science in Healthcare Policy and Management, designed as a four-year degree, the goal of which is to give students career proficiencies in the policy and management of healthcare services through a breadth of didactic and practum, practicum courses and by providing experiential learning opportunities appropriate for non-clinical students. This action comes in response to a projected increase of eighteen percent for positions for health services managers by two thousand and twenty-eight. The HCPM degree will orient students to the diversity of careers within and related to the healthcare industry and expose students to issues common to health occupations while providing core skills needed to effectively lead in the healthcare industry. The proposed program will also serve the university's mission to prepare its diverse population of students for the future of work in the healthcare industry, allowing them to develop the necessary skills for academic and professional advancement in the fast-growing area while ensuring equity and access to this vital professional field. May I have a second for this item?
Second, Inataz Garcia.
Thank you. Discussion on this item or comments? Questions? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item four C, Lehman College Establish Your Program in Organizational Leadership, Development and Change Leading to the Doctor of OD Education Degree. Lehman College's School of Education seeks to establish a fifty-two credit Doctor of Education in Organizational Leadership, Development and Change, EDOLDC Program. This action responds to the changing needs of adult learners and the organizations that employ them. The proposed EDOLDC program will build on the college's MS in organizational leadership program, which has grown rapidly and has put Lehman in the vanguard of leadership studies. The EDOLDC program will provide students with the knowledge and skills that will enable them to be effective leaders in a variety of organizations while providing organizations in the region with graduates who have developed their abilities to perform leadership functions effectively. The program will also represent a strategic commitment on behalf of Lehman to invest in the delivery of more online and low residency programs and some of the costs associated with this program are investments in Lehman's infrastructure to update online and low residency capabilities, allowing the program to be fully self-sustaining within two years. May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this item, questions? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item four D, City University of New York Amend and Replace the Policy Guidelines for Centers, Institutes, Consortium and Special Initiatives. This polity, I, this policy item was previously tabled at the June twenty ninth, twenty twenty Board of Trustees Meeting. This amendment was originally pursued in response to a two thousand and nineteen request from the Board of Trustees that the university review the current state of centers and institutes to better align their operations with policy guidelines. Based on review, the Office of Academic Affairs has proposed six major amendments to the current policy guidelines to ensure that centers, institutes and consortia ultimately support the mission of the colleges and the university. Five of the amendments proposed in June remain, including that centers, institutes and consortia must enrich and supplement the core mission of the university, aim to become fiscally self-sufficient through external fundraising. Funding plans must specify how the entity will aim to sustain its activities and operations. Tax levy funding, when provided, will be limited in duration and extent. Enforce term limits for directors. Additional terms can be requested by a letter from the campus president explaining the rationale for the request. Make a, make annual reports publicly available and be evaluated every five years. Based on our concerns from the June meeting regarding approval authority, the policy has been changed to state that the Office of Academic Affairs will review the proposal for centers, institutes and consortia and make recommendations to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research on the approval or disapproval of the proposed entity. As such, creation of a new center, institute or consortium at the university requires approvals at the campus and university levels pursuant to local governance processes and these entities are subject to the authority of the Board of Trustees. May I have a second for this item?
Erger, second.
Discussion on this item and or questions? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item number four E is a resolution requesting approval of the actions in the November twenty third, twenty third, twenty twenty Capper Dashboard Effective December fifteenth, twenty twenty. Routine academic matters, local academic policies and course inclusions in the university's general education program are presented to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research in summary form. May I have a second for this item?
Shorter, second.
Any discussion or questions on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item number five, a Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration. Item five A, the City University of New York Approval of the Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration Report. The December Committee for Faculty, Staff and Administration Report contains a total of eighty-six employee actions, including thirty-two faculty appointments and reappointments with tenure, twenty-eight fellowship leaves and twenty acting or interim appointments. May I have a second for this item?
Secondly, Inataz Garcia.
Discussion or questions on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item five B is a resolution to amend certain investment options in the City University, City University of New York Optional Retirement Program and Tax-deferred Annuity Plan. The Vice Chancellor for Human Resources Management is authorized to amend the array of investment options within the plans to eliminate the Templeton Global Bond R Six Fund as an optional investment for new contributions by participants. Direct all future contributions to the age-appropriate target date fund vintage and add the TIAA Stable Value Fund in accordance with the New York Educational Law, Section sixty-two fifty-one. May I have a second for this item?
For rare seconds.
Any discussion on this item or questions? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item five C, the Graduate Center. Item five C, the Graduate Center Amendment of the Board of Trustees Bylaws to create the title of Writers Institute. The City University of New York Board of Trustees Bylaws, Article 6, Section 1, will be amended to create the title of Writers Institute Lecturer at the Graduate Center. Additionally, pursuant to Section 5.1 of the bylaws, by unanimous consent of the trustees of the board present, the board waives the requirement that amendments to the bylaws be proposed at a meeting preceding the meeting at which a vote is taken. May I have a second for this item?
Shorter, seconded.
Any discussion on this item or questions? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item five D is a resolution to amend the Governance Plan for the CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy. Recognizing the school's considerable growth since it was approved by the Board of Trustees as a standalone professional school, the proposed revised Governance Plan seeks to preserve flexibility in order to keep pace with the school's considerable growth while upholding the principles of shared governance. The plan has been approved by the school's FSC on October 28, 2020, and the dean recommends the adoption of the amendments. May I have a second for this item?
Arvin, eighty, second.
Discussion on this item or questions? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item five E is a resolution to award Michael Mandel with early tenure in the Department of Computer and Information Sciences at Brooklyn College with an application of bylaw 6.2.2. May I have a second for this item? Any discussion on this item or questions? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item number five F is a resolution to award Malcolm J. Meriwether with early tenure in the Music Conservatory of Brooklyn College with an application of bylaw 6.2.2. May I have a second for this item?
Shorter, second.
Any discussion or questions for this item?
Is there a quick rationale that can be given for why early tenure?
I believe we have President on the line and/or are... Does the Chancellor have anybody who would like to answer this?
Very quick. I mean, I'm just curious.
Michelle, do you want to come in?
Both?
Sure, go right ahead. Michelle?
Both candidates or just, you know, Michael?
Yeah, I assume it's similar. I'm sure it's similar to both, so.
Sure. So, Mike Mandel, both of these candidates are absolute superstars, Charlie. Mike Mandel has won two major National Science Foundation awards to total more than $1 million on two different projects of great import. And we risk losing both candidates.
Gotcha.
The second one, Malcolm Meriwether, I hope that you can reach out and just put his name into Google. He has been featured in the New York Times for his extraordinary coral arranging arrangements and his work. He's really tremendously revitalized our entire coral program. He's an absolute superstar, both of them.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions on this topic? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item number six, Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Item six A, the City University of New York authorize a lease amendment with 5030 Broadway MMS to extend the term of the CUNY in the Heights Center at 5030 Broadway. Since 2011, the CUNY in the Heights Center has operated in 15,000 square feet, at least space on the first floor at 5030 Broadway. In late 2017, the CUNY Board of Trustees approved a 15,000-square-foot increase in space for CUNY in the Heights Center on the second floor of the building to add classrooms and support spaces in order to increase the number of credit-bearing classes offered at the CUNY in the Heights Center. CUNY Express Immigration Center, CUNY Citizenship Now, is currently using other space in the building pursuant to license agreements with the landlord that are expiring, and this program will be relocated to additional space. During the course of design for the additional space, an elevator connecting the two leased floors was added to provide ADA access. The new lease amendment ensures that the elevator will be properly installed by providing space in the basement for mechanical equipment. May I have a second for this item?
Secondly, Inataz Garcia.
Discussion on this item or questions? Any questions? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item six B is a resolution to authorize the sale of the Medgar Everest College Presidential Residence. The university purchased the residence on June 17, 2010 for the personal and official use of the president of Medgar Everest College for $1.5 million. The university would like to transfer the residence to the City University Construction Fund so that CUCF can coordinate and manage the sale on behalf and for the benefit of the university for the highest and best value. CUCF is authorized to provide facilities for use by the university and has the ability to procure and hire residential real estate appraisers and brokers to implement the sale of the residence. Upon the sale of the residence, the president of Medgar Everest College will receive a housing stipend as provided by the university to other college presidents. Proceeds from the sale, less customary closing costs will be directed to the university along with documentation necessary to properly disclose the sale of its financial statements. May I have a second for this item?
Erger, second.
Discussion on this item or questions? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item six C is a resolution to authorize the sale of the College of Staten Island Presidential Residence. DASNY purchased on behalf and for the benefit of the university, the CSI Presidential Residence, for $960,000 on September 15, 1999, for the personal and official use by the president of the College of Staten Island. The university would like DASNY to transfer the CSI Presidential Residence to the City University of New York Construction Fund so that CUCF can coordinate and manage the sale on behalf and for the benefit of the university. Upon the sale of the residence, the president of CSI will receive a housing stipend as provided by the university to other college presidents. Proceeds from the sale, less customary closing costs, will be directed to the university along with documentation necessary to properly disclose the sale on its financial statements. May I have a second for this item?
Arvin, eighty, seconds.
Any discussion or questions on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item number seven, Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. Item seven A, the CUNY School of Labor and Urban Studies, Establishment of a Student Activity Fee. The school was established in 2018 in offer undergraduate and graduate degree programs and is the only campus without an established student activity fee, which funds a variety of activities, programs, and events in support of the student body. The students held a referendum in accordance with the Board of Trustees bylaws to establish $25 student activity fee effective spring of 2021. The referendum was held from Wednesday, October 14, 2020, to Monday, October 26, 2020. The vote was 72 in favor and zero opposed, with a 23% of the eligible students voting. The earmarks were recommended by the School of Labor and Urban Studies Student Union. May I have a second for this item?
Trustee P. Quant, second.
Any discussion or questions on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item number eight, a Resolution of Appreciation for Barry Schwartz. Let me ask the Secretary of the Board to please read our resolution. Gail, you're on mute.
Sorry, it went off of my screen, but here we go. Let me pull it back up. And it's still off my screen. It's so weird. Okay, here we go. So, Resolution of Appreciation for Barry F. Schwartz. Whereas the Honorable Barry F. Schwartz was approved by Governor Andrew M. Cuomo on May 6, 2014, as a member of the Board of the City University of New York, and whereas Mr. Schwartz was appointed Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees by Governor Andrew M. Cuomo on October 5, 2016, and whereas Mr. Schwartz served as Chair and Member of the Board's Fiscal Affairs Committee, Chair and Vice Chair of the Board Subcommittee on Investment, and Vice Chair of the Executive Committee and Committee on Long Range Planning, and whereas Mr. Schwartz provided invaluable contributions to the university by ensuring effective leadership as Vice Chair of the Chancellor's Search Committee, Chair of the Brooklyn College Presidential Search Committee, Chair of the Borough of Manhattan Community College Presidential Search Committee, Chair of the Baruch College Presidential Search Committee, and Chair of the City College of New York Presidential Search Committee, and as a member of the Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Search Committee. Now therefore be resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York express their sincere thanks and deepest appreciation to the Honorable Barry F. Schwartz for his enthusiasm, devotion, and outstanding service to the City University of New York, and be a further resolve that the Board of Trustees extends its best wishes for his continued success and all of his future endeavors.
May I have a second?
Second.
Secondly, Inataz Garcia.
You know, before, just quick discussion on this item, and I'm going to, the prerogative of the chair. I'm going to miss Barry. Barry, in the time that I've been on the board, has become a good friend and somebody who I went to for advice and relied on. He was a great stabilizing force on this board and within the CUNY institution. And, you know, at a certain point, people's name, you know, it's, you can vote a resolution of appreciation, but it really doesn't summarize in full all the things and the contributions that Barry made. I'll say I'll miss him being on this board, even though in the period of time he's been on, he is a friend, and I will value his friendship and continue to see him. I'll value his friendship for my lifetime. So, I just wanted to, you know, just briefly say to Barry, and he is not here, you know, I will give him a call later just to let him know that we said good things about him, but I'm going to miss Barry, and I will always wish him well and look forward to, as I said, a lifelong continued friendship with Barry. Any other comments or, well, not questions, but any other comments from anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Trustee Ferrer?
I'd be very proud to associate myself with every one of your comments.
Thank you, sir. Other comments?
Chairman, I wholeheartedly agree with everything you said. He was truly the heart and mind of so many of us, and the work and the wisdom that he was able to show, and will miss him terribly, and he is truly a good friend, so please send him. If you speak with him tonight, please send him my regards.
I definitely will.
Thank you.
This is Jill O'Donnell Torme. I just want to say Barry was a gentleman and a scholar and a very smart man, and he will be sorely missed.
This is Charlie. I just want to say I agree with everything that everyone has said, and I had a special bond with Barry that goes back to when he was in college. He went to Oberlin College, and it turned out he became a sick individual his freshman year, and when he went to the school nursery at that small college, the school nurse there was my godmother. So, to some extent, I have some bearing on his well-being.
So, you're responsible, you're saying you're responsible for Barry's health?
No, 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 but just a wonderful link, and he was just, I served on a number of committees with him on searches, and it was just fantastic working with him, as you said, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the lack of prerogative from the Chancellor, I would like to, on behalf of the entire Chancellery, all the presidents and deans, also sort of show a deep appreciation for the service of former trustee Schwartz. He was a great servant of this university. He made every committee that he participated better, and with his input and his comments, his dedication, he made all of us individually better on this university better, so we also extend our salute to our friend.
Thank you, Chancellor.
Chairman, aside from everything that everyone has said, when I joined the board three years ago, you know, and Barry reached out, sat down, spoke with me, and really explained to me a lot of what this role was about, but more than that, in the three years that we were colleagues, just learning from how he acted, how he thought. In every meeting and every discussion that we had, I am just truly grateful for the role modeling he's done for someone like me as a new trustee, but also just going forward, hopefully, I think he's left an impact on the entire board as a whole as well.
Absolutely.
Chairman, you know, somebody has said everything that we all feel, and Kevin, I feel the same. He was a model trustee for a lot of us. He had a personal touch to it, and one of the things that always stood out was how he made sure to visit all the schools. You know, he made it personal and always was very engaging in any issues or discussions we had, and like everyone else says, he's going to be sorely missed.
All right.
I just want to associate myself with those comments. Barry reached out to me and made my landing at the Board of Trustees. As someone who's a non-academic and hadn't been involved in the world, he made it a very easy landing for me, and I'll never forget that.
All right, with that, I guess we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That resolution is approved with the grateful thanks of the entire Board of Trustees and the Chancellery. And I will communicate that to Barry later. There are two items the Chancellor has requested be added to the agenda today. We'll add one at a time and then call for a vote on each one. Let me now call in the secretary to present item number nine.
So, item number nine is a resolution to authorize the Office of Risk, Audit, and Compliance. Whereas on July 29, 2019, the City University of New York, the university chancellor Felix V. Matos Rodriguez established the Office of the Vice Chancellor for Risk, Audit, and Compliance, otherwise known as RAC, the first-ever university-wide office whose broad mission is to assist in the planning, development, implementation, and oversight of policies and initiatives related to and including university-wide enterprise risk management, investigations, audit, compliance, and federal Title IX regulations. And whereas at its meeting on October 7, 2019, the university Board of Trustees appointed the first-ever Vice Chancellor for the Office of Risk, Audit, and Compliance. And whereas the Vice Chancellor shall report to the Chancellor of the university, and whereas to achieve its mission, RAC is initially comprised of five distinct units, Investigations, the Office of Internal Audit and Management Services, Compliance, Enterprise Risk Management, and Title IX Compliance. And whereas RAC's Investigations Unit examines and provides legal advice pertaining to allegations of misconduct, including violations of laws, regulations, and university policies, and consults with the university's schools or colleges and various branches of the university, central administration, and the assessment and investigation of a variety of allegations, including but not limited to claims of fraud, misconduct, and conflicts of interest referred to the university internally and by external agencies. And whereas RAC's Office, I'm sorry, of Internal Audit and Management Services renders recommendations and pertinent comments concerning university operations and programs to ensure that organizational goals and objectives are achieved through the performance of audits and quality assurance appraisals, and ensures that the university's resources are safeguarded against loss due to waste, fraud, or abuse, and the university complies with applicable laws and regulations. And whereas RAC's Compliance and Enterprise Risk Management Units work with various departments and officials across the university to ensure that systems, standards, and processes are in place to reduce compliance risks, identify, investigate, and address all standards, and processes are in place to reduce compliance risks, identify, investigate, and address all instances of alleged and actual non-compliance, promote compliance standards throughout the university, and coordinate the university's enterprise risk management by providing a framework and process for the identification, assessment, mitigation, and monitoring of risks to the achievement of the university's mission and goals. And whereas RAC's Title IX Compliance Unit reviews applicable laws, statutes, and reg, regulations, as well as oversees the university's compliance efforts with federal, state, and local legislation, including Title IX, the Clery Act, Violence Against Women Act, New York State Enough is Enough legislation, New York State Model Sexual Harassment Policy, and university's policy on sexual misconduct. And whereas as part of its duties and mandates, RAC's units will be tasked with conducting inquiries, investigations, and providing legal advice to and on behalf of the university, university's central administration, the university's schools or colleges and affiliates, including but not limited to foundations and auxiliary enterprise corporations or other third parties that have a contract relationship with the university. And whereas RAC shall conduct full reasoned and independent inquiries and investigations that are confidential and privileged, including but not limited to A, gathering and analyzing evidence, including the inspection, examination, or audit of any books, records, documents, or papers relevant or material to RAC inquiries and investigations; B, conducting witness interviews; C, reviewing any necessary investigative or audit reports; and D, reviewing any applicable laws, statutes, or regulations. And whereas, as part of its duties and mandates, RAC may receive requests from the Board of Trustees, the Chancellor, University Central Administration, or one of the university's schools or colleges to review and conduct various inquiries and investigations that are confidential and privileged, in which RAC's units will be asked to render legal advice and communicate whether oral or written in a confidential and privileged manner with respect to the university. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the Office of Risk Audit and Compliance to conduct inquiries and investigations, to collaborate when applicable with the university's central administration, the university's schools or colleges, affiliates, including but not limited to foundations and auxiliary enterprise corporations or other third parties that have a contractual relationship with the university, as well as provide legal counsel to the university Board of Trustees, the Chancellor, university's central administration, or the colleges or schools, on university-wide internal investigations, enterprise risk management, ethics issues, programmatic audits, compliance, Title IX, the protection of organizational assets against fraud and theft, and any other related matters, and that the Vice Chancellor of Risk Audit and Compliance Report, when appropriate, to the Board of Trustees and Chancellor regarding issues relating to the university-wide investigations, enterprise risk management, ethics issues, programmatic audits, compliance, Title IX, the protection of organizational assets against fraud and theft, or any other related materials. Explanation in response to findings by external governmental agencies. The Board of Trustees and the Chancellor established an office within the university to establish consistent institutional standards and practices across the university in relation to university-wide internal investigations, enterprise risk management, ethics issues, programmatic audits, compliance, Title IX, the protection of organizational assets against fraud and theft, and any other related materials.
Thank goodness that you did that one. Um, I make a motion to add item number nine to our agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
Item number nine has been added. Let me now present item number nine. May I have a second for that?
Second. Welcome second.
Discussion on this item? Questions? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item has been approved. Let me now call in the secretary to present item number ten.
Item number ten is a resolution to authorize the City University of New York to engage Arnold &amp; Porter LLP to provide legal services. Whereas the City University of New York, the university, has been asked to respond to pre-litigation investigative requests concerning the use of grant funding, which necessitates a large-scale review and subsequent production of documents, witness testimony, and other responses. And whereas the New York State Office of the Attorney General does not represent the university in these types of pre-litigation investigative matters. And whereas the university seeks to retain a law firm with the specialized expertise required to represent the university to respond to these investigative requests. And whereas the university has selected a firm that has the particular and requisite expertise and experience to handle such complex issues to enable the necessary representation of the university. And whereas Arnold &amp; Porter LLP is one of the nation's notable law firms possessing experience in the field of internal corporate investigations, litigation, and corporate law matters, law-related matters, and has handled complex internal high-profile investigations. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorize the general counselor is designated, and that they hereby are, and each of them hereby is, authorized to sign and deliver a contract with Arnold &amp; Porter LLP to provide legal services to CUNY permitting the university to make expenditures and purchases not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over a period of six months, together with any and all agreements, documents, and other instruments related thereto, and to take any and all such other actions as such officer so acting may deem necessary or appropriate, and that such signature by such duly authorized officer of the university shall be conclusive evidence of his or her authority to perform all such acts and to sign and deliver all such documents and instruments on behalf of the university. And be it further resolved that any subsequent material changes to the terms and conditions of the Aferset Contract shall be submitted to the university Board of Trustees for its consideration and approval. Explanation, the law firm will represent the university and the Board of Trustees to minimize potential liability to the, of the university and protect the university's interests. The contract and any renewals will be subject to review and approval by the Office of the Attorney General and the Office of the State Controller.
Okay, I make a motion to add item number ten to our agenda. May I have a second?
For a seconds.
Item ten has been added. I now present item number ten. May I have a second for that?
For a seconds.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Right, that item has been approved. I don't think there's any other business, Gail. There being no further business, let me ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. And a second? Here we go.
One second.
All right, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Have a wonderful and safe holiday season, everybody. Be careful. Take care, everybody.
Thank you.